Welcome back, guys, to Persona Free Reload, our last episode! Within the Love Hotel, we found the Shadow that robbed our wills, defeating the representation of the Lover's Arcana to end the threat on the full moon once again, while a shady trio washed on. With exams looming, our next moon cycle begins, having just reached Hanged Man Rank 4 as we continue on. It's not gonna go well, is it?
Oh, welcome back!
So I need to talk to Fuuka. Oh, about what? Oh, um, there's something I have to clear up. I'm sure you're burnt out coming right off an operation. You know, it might do you good to just rest today. Hey, you can't micromanage me! As soon as he's not here, so we're skipping Taurus tonight. Just take it easy for now. Okay, we are skipping. What? Were you gonna order me round, oh high and mighty leader? Ugh, whatever. I could be just as good as you too. Yikes! For our next story, mysterious vandalism has occurred at the hotel Champs de Fleur. Mirrors in multiple hotel rooms were shattered. Though the hotel had many guests, none of them saw the culprit. Some guests have also reported theft in their rooms. Well, yeah, I did eat drinks and stuff, didn't I? What? Uh-oh! Police are currently investigating the incident. It's good that I don't know who's in the coffins, because I could've got some real blackmail material! Do you mean blackmail material? They're just living out their healthy lives. Enjoying themselves. There's nothing to be ashamed of. Almost forgot! I wanted to apologize for hitting you yesterday. I kept meaning to say something earlier, but I didn't want anyone else to hear. So, um, yeah, I'm sorry. Okay, um... Just like to point out, apologies is not a currency that you can just use after the fact every time and be okay with, from my side too. Just maybe don't slap me in the face. I didn't do anything to you. I know it's the trope in everything, but still. I guess apology accepted. Uh, so about last night's operation. Did something happen between you and your Kari-chan? Kari-chan has been acting a little weird lately. I just hope nothing's bothering her. Or maybe, maybe to be honest, I do deserve a slap for not showing any sign of interest? That could be quite upsetting as well. It's like, how do you play that? What is the right way to play that? Mate, nothing's really going on in town today. No one wants to study for exams. I haven't now, though. Look at it. Yeah, nothing really going down. Game parade? Has academics something going on? Maybe I could do that for a little bit more smarts for the future. To be honest with the way that everything builds up, I think I might just get charm maxed up preemptively for anything that might happen. I probably already have enough academics. I'm not gonna reach 5 before the next exams, am I? It just feels to make sense to me that I should just get it over and done with, though. To be honest, it looks like paying there is probably gonna be one of the bigger gains that I can get after all. I don't need the money anymore. No one wants to do something back at HQ, which is kind of a shame, because I'd do that instead of doing this. You're the answer! Edgar's House of Fortune increases Persona's magic. I played the quiz game You're the Answer. You are the answer. I increased my intelligence by competing against other players from all over Japan. I was studying, honest. You can't say anything else about me. I was studying. I can hear people talking. You know, our campus is actually pretty clean and new. I do notice after my club, I had to visit another school. My parents said that our schools were built after an explosion 10 years ago. I also heard that the explosion wasn't the only reason. Around that time, a lot of students suddenly stopped coming to school. Maybe that's why they put up the new building to start with a clean slate? What, you think there's a dark side to Gekko-Kan High? You watch way too much TV. A first spell has rung. Explosions have happened. Yeah, let's skim through class as well. Let's talk about the Heian era today. I wouldn't spend a lot of time on this, so pay attention. In 794, the Heian Kyō was established. In 894, they abolished imperial embassies to China. I might put this section on the exam next week. I'm feeling lazy. 794, the Heian Kyō was established. In 894, they abolished imperial embassies to China. Okay, thanks. Anyway, on to feudalism! Listen carefully, because this has to do with the origins of the Samurai. I choose Jūisola! Let's see what you know! I don't wanna see... No... So the law permitting permanent ownership of newly cultivated land serves as a foundation for the development of feudalism. Thanks to this decree, a lot of land was cultivated. At the same time, a serious problem arose for the farmers. Do you remember what that was? Land invasion, environmental destruction, or social disparity? So the law permitting permanent ownership of newly cultivated land served as a foundation for the development of feudalism. A lot of land was cultivated. I mean, it wouldn't be land invasion then, because it was like a lawful act. Environmental destruction? It's never had an issue with Japan. Right? I've not heard anything that Japan wrecked its, like, arable land or something like that by over-farming, or... Anything like that? I mean, some countries barely have any arable land. Isn't Norway one of them, with like, only like 18% arable land or something like that? Think I read that this week, but I don't know if that's true, because you know, you need multiple sources of anything on the internet now. Well, the sound of it then? Law permitted permanent ownership. Newly cultivated land serves as a foundation for the development of feudalism, which is like laws, etc. Thanks to decree, a lot of land was cultivated. At the same time, a serious problem arose for the farmers. So it's probably they ended up having all their stuff bought out from under them. So was it social disparity that they could not compete, and they had to fall under the Lords? I don't think it's these two. Yep, you got it! The work doesn't end after you plow the land. It costs a lot of money to build waterways and stuff on top of that. So the farmers with more wealth and authority can make more money by expanding their lands. And if it were the Lord owning everything? On the other hand, those who weren't as affluent had no choice but to remain poor. It's the same old story for our time. Well, that's for the Heian period! I thought they would've even owned any of their land at all! It went way better than I thought it did! Everyone in the class is looking at me with respect, supposedly. I almost like, nah, the farmers don't own their land. The Lord owns their land. They don't get any of it. They just have to work on it. I thought it was that kind of social disparity where they had to like, they weren't even... They had their land bought out from under them. Well, class has ended for today. Now what do you want? Don't bother me if it's not important. I'm heading home now. My god, Shempai! Suddenly evil. Well, not evil. Edgy, angsty, hmm... How would you label this? Irritable? Bow Syndrome? Why are you just adding words in front of his name? Bad pay, petty pay. And petty poy? Sounds kinda like a... Peas? What about peas? Unknown sender, request? Okay. Greet is such a terrible sin. Alas, I cannot help but want. And now the number of requests I have for you has increased. I would be incredibly pleased should you spare the time to fulfill them. Sincerely yours forevermore, Elizabeth. I can see that you are living quite the fulfilling life between nurturing your bonds and striving for self-improvement. This is less of a reward and more of a gift from me to you. Please take it. Oh, thanks! I still cannot foresee the limits of your potential. I look forward to witnessing you grow even further. Now may I assist you? Requests. Do I already have torrent shot? Maybe? Yes, I do. So it literally came up and I could do it. Oh, the page is already completed. Here, take. This is your reward. Three attack mirrors. Okay, reflects. I wish to feel the ocean. Bring something you find from the ocean. So a shell? I long to visit this place called the ocean. Alas, as you know, I am unable to abandon my post here, apart from you can go a little bit out. So if you ever have the opportunity to visit the ocean, would you look for something that feels like the ocean for me? Bring me a Christmas star. This time, I'd like for you to bring me a certain plant. It is often referred to as the Christmas star. I do not have any more knowledge on the subject. Should you require help, I recommend asking someone well-versed in plants. Please feed the cat. Give the hungry cat some food! A sense of presence? There seems to be a hungry cat somewhere out there. Appears to have trouble finding food. As such, it has not yet been fed. Would you please find and feed the poor thing? I've been trying to for months! I'd like to see a pair of Max Safety Shoes. The other day, I overheard a housewife say something rather intriguing. Within the world of online shopping, these Max Safety Shoes are extremely popular right now. I would love to see what makes these shoes so special. Would you please bring me a pair? Let me hear music unique to Gekko-Kan, the Gekko-Kan Boogie. It's said that music can paint a vivid reflection of the culture at that time and place in history. Should that prove true, then I wonder if the Gekko-Kan High School you attend has its own unique music as well? Been in my mind ever since I first heard of this. So will you do me one favor? I'd like to hear a piece of music distinctive to your learning facility, Gekko-Kan High School. A chilled taiyaki. I believe there is a sweet grilled fish called taiyaki that is often consumed in your world. Apparently, there is also a strange taiyaki that is cold even though it has been grilled. Either one would love to have a taste. Could you please bring me one? To feed a rare shadow number one, bring back one rustic coin. To feed a rare shadow in the third block, yabasha. Fourth old document for 40k in cash. Oh yeah, what's the rewards? Seven onyxes. A night-hill cloth. Female uniform S. Twilight fragments. Mel's summer garb for the cat. Jack's gloves for the Christmas star. Amethyst for the ocean. I do not need anything else. If you require anything else, please do not hesitate to ask. Now we got our requests sorted. Beautiful! Let's go feed a cat. This cat looks very weak. It seems like it might be hungry. Maybe I should give it super cat food? Do I have super cat food or just normal cat food? Meow, meow! Cat is purring loudly. It seems happy. Maybe the cat will feel better if I come back and feed it again tomorrow? We must raise this cat from the ashes! Quick, back to Polonia Mall! We need to build a supply! And Monday's the best day for buying here, right? Is it Monday? What's that for the other place? It is getting hot again. It's a significantly cooler day, to be fair. Oh, I should buy some more disc jumps now. Look at it. No, no, no! Disc rage? I didn't have any of them! It is significantly cooler than last time. It is only above me 29 degrees Celsius in my room this time, opposed to the 34.8 degrees Celsius it was when we played last! Which had me in a state of worry. Tomorrow is supposed to be 21 degrees outside. It's amazing! That one's here, that one's here. Bring him home the kitty. How'd you know it's a he? So I can buy a takoyaki. And then, do I somehow wanna like, put it in the fridge? I have a moon or a higher-fund persona. I can't put it in the fridge right now, anyway. But one of them can go up and the other one can, no matter what. We need to have other related persona to get our bonuses. The exams are coming, I tell you. They're coming. Alright then. I can fuse one. And I need Shisha here. Could go to make pyrophant, unregistered at this point in time. Now, we're 27 now as well, so we've got things that can go up a fair bit. Hmm... Omoraki can make fool sun lovers. And have a temperance with a hen. We don't need a fool, though, is the issue, isn't it? We don't have a sun guy or a lover's person. Garulu, which is moon, is something we do need. Temperance, justice, power and more. I should totally be looking by this list, shouldn't I? By Arcana. Imateno Olorochi. Strength and priestess together makes that. Weak to fist! Pyrophant to the Shisha. Principality and huapu. Well, I could get one of you covered, and then I could summon in a moon one, really. Let's do justice and magician. Weak to fire. We're gonna get Rakukaja at the very least. I take the dodge staff? Koha or Medea? Koha, I've got another healer. Though I do wonder if I should've went to the, uh, book and stored people first. That would've been a good idea. Hi, Shisha! You will get reward. Don't worry, be happy! Don't worry about a thing. Alright, Rakukaja, so thingy, and ice boost as well. Dodge fire is gonna be an ability. Not bad, not bad. I'll take it, I'll take it. Now I should register some. Oh, I need to get you leveled up so you can get that thing. Some of them don't have hearts. They're heartless! I don't wanna register all, just in case, like, there's a mucko with how I've got this better. And then I guess a moon one would probably sort me quite well for things that are going on here? The only moon persona I have is Garulu. Job done, I guess. Hi, so do I hang out then, or do I just gain stats? Probably gain for now, right? Hey there, Alessandriken! Perfect timing. Do you wanna go get something to eat? I can hear my poor stomach cry miserably. I feel as if we can grow closer thanks to the moon persona Garulu again. I feel like I might grow closer to Sumitsu-su. Should I spend some more time after school with Sumitsu? Yes! Wonderful, my gourmet friend! Our culinary adventure continues! Today, we'll be going to Wakatsu. There's something for everyone on that menu! I assume there's nothing about eating too much for our friend here? That it is just that "are you feeling sick?" should be the actual answer? Because I don't think this person gets eating too much of what that means. I said I did have a katsu today, so the person who katsu me up was close forever, yeah? Beautiful! I'm gonna say "are you feeling sick"? I can tell Sumitsu's trying to be considerate of me. I feel like our relationship is stronger. After he was Sumitsu and enjoying that dark repertoire, I went back to the dorm! Okay, then. Welcome back! Feeling rested? There's plenty of time until the next full moon, and while I wish I could tell you to take it slow, final start next week, so I'd like you to care for your health and concentrate on your studies. Nope. Yeah, study time started! Where are the other two still? They still up in that room? Oh, they're chatting. Ooh, there's an event! Kurisho Senpai takes submission really seriously. She would probably do just about anything to annihilate the Shadows. I can respect feeling that there's something you have to do, but isn't it a bit much sometimes? I think I know what you mean. There are a lot of old sayings about maintaining balance in your life. I understand not wanting to be too laid back, but you shouldn't become obsessive either. What event is going down? You don't sell me any SP stuff, do you? Um, did you need something? Can I think of it? Elizabeth asked me to get a specific item for her. Ah, Christmas star. That's the ornament at the top of the tree, right? Why do you need one of those? Oh, if I'm right, it might not refer to an ornament at all. It's a type of plant that's sometimes called the Christmas star. Could you wait a few minutes? I'll go double-check. Which plant? Coinsetia! Sorry for the wait. Here you go. I think what you're looking for is a coinsetia. This flower is usually sold during Christmas time, so it'd be hard to find it in any stores now. Fortunately, I had some in my room. Here you go. I think it's wonderful that Kurisho Senpai is so passionate about her cause, but being too passionate can cause people around you to feel confused. It is a difficult balancing act. I bet you anything the Narkas available. No, maybe not! Well, glad you didn't accept the bet! Oh, is there something I can assist you with? Yes, there is. It seems you've completed a request. One moment, please, while I check. That red leaf plant, is that the Christmas star? I was led to believe that there would be presents growing from this plant. This fulfills my request, but you can take it back with you. Although, once the presents are in bloom, I'd like for these plants to fill our room. Please take this as your reward. Jack's gloves? Why thank you, I guess. Time-limited ones are the ones that are dealt with the fastest. Seize knuckles to Jack's gloves. Charm high! Equip them? Of course I will! Why wouldn't I equip jacks to punch people in the face with? Hey! Security training website, the information gatherer? If you're interested in trading videos, I found this site with a bunch of self-defense courses for security teams. This kind of stuff is supposed to be trade secret, you know? But I'm letting you in on this because you're my kind of weird. If you're interested, come to Escapade. Haven't used any of these yet, in case it takes time. Security site near cost 5,000, featuring videos on taking down enemies. You can buy this at any time, right? Oh, well, I'm an idiot. It's been a pleasure that I'm an idiot. Am I charming enough now? Oh, okay, now I am! Sorry, the answer's no. A guy like you must already have a girlfriend, and I'd hate to get in a way. So I get a charm fresh off that her answer changed. Now she thinks I'm too hot for her, maybe? Mate, nothing really going on. I got a complaint from a passenger. The guy called me reticent, unsociable and moody, but when I try to talk, they tell me to shut up. This job, I tell you. Righty go. I guess we're studying. See what's on TV! Next, some good news! Nada has become surprisingly popular overseas. No, it hasn't! Called Miracle Beans, in foreign countries, they sell five times what they do in Japan! A well-known Nada producer said, "Good thing I kept making it!" Doubt! Oh, Solder! I came here to get a drink, got caught by Mitsuru, as you can see. Not worried about Akiko's grades, I'm more worried he'll run off and do some reckless training. Studying has the added benefit of preventing that possibility. So here we are, even though I'm mostly done studying for the exams. And why don't you overlook Solder's studies? That is, if he is able to join us. Alright, sit down. I'll be your study coach. Shoot, I wanted to go check the fridge. Any tips for grasping formulas? Any tips for remembering Kanji? Memorizing vocab? Formulas?
Nothing beats using them in practice problems. Are you concerned about getting bored and losing focus? In that case, try a quick workout between problems. The brain perks up once you get the circulation flowing, not to mention... Looking forward to your next workout is a great way to stay motivated. In any case, I advise having a good workout ready to treat yourself with after a study session. It all comes down to making it a regular habit. Just a little...
Hmm, I guess you have a point. In that case, how would you recommend cramming for it?
I don't want them, the two of them continue giving me rigorous advice. Just like reading the chat, like, anyone here old enough to remember how the internet was back in 2009? Was it still dial-up? I can't remember, that was... That was 24! Pretty sure we moved on dial-up then.
You